This is the regular meeting of the Rapid County County Board of Zoning. And the first item is the Secretary, Dr. Kaiser, recalled the role.
Mr. Bird?
Here.
Mr. Kine?
Here.
Mr. Schard?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Okay, thank you. The second item, we have the agenda and are, is there any additions, deletions, changes?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have two things. One's a question and the other is a proposal. I, I would like to add something to old business. And, uh, and also, um, I don't know what number three of these eight procedures that maybe I've, I've gone there from some other agenda last time.
Can I ask one?
Okay.
Okay, the one item related to, um, if a item is tabled at the planning commission, whether, how we handle, or do we have to have a meeting?
Oh, okay.
And call everybody together. I'm hoping you can figure out a way around that. If that's one thing.
Well, that's fine.
Okay, so that's it?
Well, I want to put something under old business, but I'll just bring it up.
Well, when, what has come up under old business?
Yeah, do you want to change, add something to the agenda?
Yeah, I want to add, I want to add something about, uh, this, uh, special use permit. I'm not sure of the number, but it's in the April minutes. The Singh special use permit.
Was that in April minutes?
Yeah.
And so, do we talk about that during the minutes?
Well, no, I don't want to talk about the minutes. I want to talk about what has happened since then and under old business about the, about the, uh, but I'll get to it when we get to it.
He's made a motion to add something about this Singh application to the agenda. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, is there any discussion about that?
Um, I don't have my notes about that, other than what's in the minutes, so I don't know.
Well, it's new information. It's not what's, what happened. It's what happened since then and what's happening now.
If it's under old business, it's what has already happened. But if it's something that's new, then that would be a new agenda item on the new business and that's not, has not been advertised or circulated, so.
I mean, it has to do with, with what happened since the application was withdrawn and what the status of it is now and what, if anything, the board should do. I, I mean, I don't care if you want to pick it up. I mean, for me, it's old business because it's a thing that we already dealt with. So anyway, the most.
Is this a complaint? So how does everybody feel about, just, was this just going to be an update?
Is it implemented?
I'm going to have, I'm going to propose a resolution. We have to end this, but I mean, I'll do it under old business. We can take it up later. I think we'll take it up under old business. So if there's a motion on the floor, it's been set. So I called the question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May.
Good.
May.
I'll vote no. Maybe we can take that on the agenda next meeting?
Well, I'll put it under new business.
Well, I think you, um, is that okay? We'll just put it next meeting on the agenda?
I don't want to put it on the next meeting because things are happening and I think what I'm going to ask for is that the zoning administrator takes some action and apparently, I mean, to summarize, what has happened is a building permit's been issued on the exact same plans and proposal that was submitted to the board and then withdrawn. And they're building, they're building it. And there's no, to my knowledge, there's no zoning permit been issued. And so, the building permit was issued in violation of, of the ordinance. And, uh, just like Mr. Henry brought up at the planning commission meeting last month about some other matter that was, uh, allegedly in violation of the ordinance. Uh, I mean, this is something that came to us as a board and, um, was on the table. And then, when the planning commission recommended that it be denied, uh, the applicant took the exact same plans and the exact same site plan and so forth without any permission from us. And that's required under section 170 dash 50 of the ordinance when something is expanded or enlarged. And they marched over to the building office, got a building permit to build the exact same thing on the exact same plans that they proposed and put on the table here. And Dr. Matthews went through it in great detail, what did it change and so forth and so on. And then, they withdrew it after that meeting. They withdrew it. So we never approved it. And so, without any amendment to their special use permit and without any other zoning permit from the zoning administrator, they went and got a building permit. And they're now building. To my understanding, they started construction of the very same thing that they had here that basically, without our permission, I submit is illegal. So I don't want to put it over to the next meeting. I wish all would reconsider your vote because if, if we wait another month, first of all, next month, we got this other hearing. Apparently, that's coming up, maybe two. I don't know. I don't know what happens tonight. And we're going to have a very busy schedule and I think that this calls for some kind of, well, if, if there's not much to add to it than what I've already just said. And we're either going to take some action and ask the zoning administrator and the building official to report and do something, which is what I'm going to ask that we do. Or it's going to be another two months down the road and they're going to be further along on the construction. I mean, the horse is kind of out of the barn. So it's kind of an, an important issue and I think we've, we ought to take it up now because if we don't take it up now, it could be too late. So I'd ask that the matter be reconsidered.
And you said basically what you need to tell us.
Well, I was just going to walk through the ordinance and tell you exactly what provisions are reflected, but basically, I don't have anything else to say. No.
They, they got a building permit without a zoning?
That's right. The zoning ordinance is very clear on two points. It says, if you have a special use permit, which they have, for, I think, a three-bedroom B and B, which the Hutchingtons got in nineteen ninety-two or three. And the zoning ordinance, I mean, I, I, Ms. Kaiser handed you all the thing. I think it's 170 dash 50. But the zoning ordinance says, if you have a special use permit and you expand it, enlarge it, or relocate it on the property, you have to come back to the BZI and get your permit amended. And that's what Dr. Singh or whoever it was, whatever it was in L L C or in Ridgey's, whatever, whoever in Africa was, that's what they applied to do. And then, you'll recall, it went on and on. It got continued a couple of times. It went to the planning commission finally with the amended plans. The planning commission, after I think three months of kicking the can down the road, voted to, um, to deny, to recommend that we deny the approval. And in the interim period of one week or so before our meeting, a day or two before our meeting, the application was withdrawn. But then, they took those exact same plans and without any amendment to their special use permit and without any zoning permit that's required by section, uh, 170, 137 A of the ordinance. You can't get a building permit unless you have a zoning permit. But I don't know how they did it. It's like, you know, to kill a Mockingbird, like Mayelli Ewing said. I don't know how he done it. He just done it. They waltzed into Richie's office and got themselves a zoning permit and they're building it.
Kind disorder.
What do you mean, kind disorder? What's not, what's not accurate what I just said?
Is this to be discussed?
I don't know. I mean.
Well, that's, that's the essence of it. And, and so, I think that I'll be.
Then why didn't you talk to Mr. Conick after the meeting?
Well, I don't want to talk about it after meeting. I want to talk about it after meeting. So I'm, I'm making, I'll make an emotional reconsider. You're voting not to do, to take it up. Because since it'll be two more months.
Okay.
What, what, what is it that you're proposing, what you're proposing?
Well, I'm proposing that, one, we get a report from the zoning administrator of, and from the building official of how this happened. Because it's, it's, from what I understand, I mean, look, look at the zoning ordinance. It's up and handed it out. Look at 1/3, section 137. It says you have to get a zoning permit. And after you get the zoning permit, you have to get a certificate of the zoning permit, which you then take to the building official. It's all spelled out. And they didn't get neither one. They just got a building permit without either of those. And plus, it says that the certificate of, of, of the zoning permit being issued is supposed to be posted along with the building permit at the site. And I'm going to clarify, I'm saying.
And I guess what I'm saying is that, that that is an issue that, that Richie ought to, if he is aware of it, should look into. It is not something that we should do. Why, what was, what should we do?
Well, I think we ought to pass a resolution that whatever happened will be reported to us. We, we are the body that has the authority, only the, the only body, in my opinion, has the authority to issue the zoning permit.
Okay, hold on a second. Chris, are you still in favor of discussing this at the end? I'm, I would propose just we'll put it in the area and we can decide if we want to discuss it at that point. Is that okay?
It's fine. We, we do it to my personal.
I mean, we can make the decision about whether to discuss it. Because I think you've gotten a lot out.
Pretty much.
Okay, so, okay, good. Okay, can we agree to do that?
If you want.
Too late?
Mr. Chairman, according to order, I asked you a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I've been to as many meetings as I could go to since I moved here two years ago, but I very well might have missed the meeting where you recused yourself of anything having to do with pharma because you were representing an adjoining property.
Right.
And that, that's the value of one, just you were both trying to do the same kind of thing. I, I'm not sure of what your reason was.
Yeah, I'm not sure. That's a great.
But I, I just wanted to know if that's in fact still.
No, that's one reason, I guess, I prefer not to discuss it right now, but I'm going to recuse myself from this other matter. Um, and I suppose I probably should on this. But I was just hoping we got us through this first.
I would say that my memory was correct, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. You're correct.
So is that what you do? Do it later?
I mean, I'm suggesting that. Just decide at the end and then I can recuse myself.
It's fine.
Okay, okay. Um, the next item then would be, I guess, is there no old business? Okay. New business. First one is special use for the Coontz, how do you say it?
Coontz.
Coontz Tourist Home. Are you representing the Coontz?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I represent the Coontz. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the board. Uh, the Coontz is.
You identify yourself.
My name's Taylor. I'm, I'm a chairman of Garetown. Uh, father Julie Coontz, what they received in the mail a few months ago, they received a cease and desist order because they were renting out their property from Airbnb and VRBO. There are multiple listings on these websites for properties in Rapid County. Um, and they're the first property owners that have come forth and, uh, attempted to get the necessary permit for their short-term rentals on this site. Um, the planning commission occurred the application and just, and decided to table the application. Um, and as a point of procedure, the board is going to make appeals, what happened inside, uh, whether or not to hear the application without recommendation from the planning commission.
Is that a request?
Uh, my request would be to, um.
For us to table?
To, to table this and to, um, address the points the planning commission has brought up to give the Coontz a little bit more time to present a little bit more evidence. So they'd be similar concern for the planning commission members now.
Could you share this with us?
Uh, yes, the planning commission members had issues with the right-of-way. They wanted to make sure that there was a, indeed, a recorded right-of-way to the property, um, which is one of the requirements under the, um, Rapid County Code, the zoning ordinance. Um, there's also some issues with, um, road maintenance agreement to see if the neighbors should come together with some sort of road maintenance agreements. And they're concerned about traffic on the, uh, on the road. And they had requested to see some pictures as well, so.
Took pictures.
You did? Okay.
They need to do some work.
Yeah, they, they have some, um, they have pictures as well, but they'll, they'll present it and we'll, so.
Okay, so you're not actually presenting right now until we make this decision?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And how does it work with people who showed up here to speak on this application?
Passed.
Passed, passed. Okay. Um, do we have some thoughts?
I have some thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
I was, I knew you would.
I am, I am.
I'll get, I'll get to you.
I am inclined to permit the Coontz to table the issue so that the planning commission can deal with it and that they can deal with the planning commission's concerns.
You all have?
I have an opinion. I, I, I'm good with, with tabling it. And the other question I have on our record is, have they paid back taxes, the lodging taxes for however long we've been on Airbnb?
They have not.
I was just going to say that, um, but my understanding is that, um, the treasurer cannot set up an account to pay taxes and so all the special use permit have been, uh, issued. So if the special use permit were issued, uh, they have that tax money ready to pay to account. So that's really good.
So in good faith, they would, they would pay for the, the back?
Uh, they, they would, yes.
Okay.
And the other question I have, it's come up when we've had some of these rentals in Airbnbs, is there special, uh, insurance that they've taken out or would be taking out?
Um, the, the interesting question hasn't come up. My understanding is that.
Oh, yes, it has.
Uh, with, with my current discussion, I'm, I'm still looking about the insurance. So, um, if that's a concern that the board is.
Well, this is quite a big, big, uh, hall. So we need to make sure that there's insurance in place.
Okay. Um, Mr. Collins?
Uh, before I say anything, could I see a show of hands of the people who are here tonight besides obviously the applicants that are here to speak about this application?
Just a show of hands. And are you able to comment on this one?
No, I thought I had this one.
Don't like that.
We, we're talking about Quan Lane now, right?
Right.
Sir?
Right.
But I have an open public.
I may be. Okay, Congress, I've been living on Quan Lane.
I have an open public hearing just yet. Just, oh.
So you're not here?
Thank you. Continue your thoughts.
Uh, I, I have said before, uh, a few things about these continuances. And, um, the first thing is that recommendation from the planning commission is optional. It's not mandatory. And I know that's been the practice of the board to wait for it. And when there's been some complex issues, we have done that. Uh, Mr. Bird, unfortunately, it's one case. He didn't attend the planning commission meeting, but I did. And I think Mr. Oden, more or less accurately summarized what happened. He wasn't there even. But that was a pretty good summary. The three issues that they had were, one, about the taxes. And one of the planning commissioners seemed to be under the mistaken impression, uh, that, uh, that, that the payment of the tax, the back tax for whenever they were apparently operating it before they got the permit, had to be paid. It was kind of like another case we had recently. Uh, but that's not the case. The only thing that prevents, uh, this board from dealing with that, with the planning pressure for that matter, is that something that is a lean on real estate, like the real estate taxes or some other assessment. This kind of a tax is not within that statute or within the ordinance that has to be taken care of before an application can be definite. So that was sort of a, kind of a false positive. That was one reason. The second thing was about meeting with the neighbors and so forth. The third thing was the right-of-way. I see that Mr. Oden directly said. And, uh, I, uh, I just don't feel that it's fair to all these people. I didn't count them, but I will now. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's about, there's about a dozen people here tonight, which I think, since I've been on the board, is the most people we've had at any meeting, uh, to speak on any application. And I think it is highly unfair because, just because the planning commission, for whatever reason, most, most of their reasons, in my view, were flawed. But for whatever reason, they didn't give us a recommendation. And I think we at a minimum should go ahead and hear these people. They have all come. We, this was advertised, uh, all this business about, let's check on this and let's check on that. And that, the applicant, the rules of the board's zoning appeals, which as you know, and my recommendation, were amended back last January a year ago to say, nothing should be advertised for a public hearing to all the required materials and exhibits and all that stuff is in the file. And then, and only then should be advertised. So if there was a deficiency in all of this stuff, it certainly, it doesn't matter whose fault it was, why that happened, or if the planning commission wanted something that they just dreamed up at the meeting. It doesn't matter. It's not the fault of any of these people who came to the hearing. And they should be at least, let's hear them tonight. Let's put their evidence or whatever it is they have to say on the record. And if they can come back and they want to come back next month, then they can do that. And if you still feel at the end of the public hearing that we should defer it and wait for the planning commission's recommendation, uh, we can always do that. And as to the tax payment, we can also condition the approval, if that's their vote to approve it. Uh, we could have conditioned it on them working it out with the treasurer and just that the permit wouldn't issue till they take care of it. And they can do that out of date, whatever, to the board's satisfaction. So that's not a reason to postpone the hearing, that I think. And I just think it's really unfair to people, as I have said. People take time off and they come to the meeting. So they came all the way down from Chester Gap, about the barbers place away there is in the county, to come to the meeting and then get told, oh, well, come back next month. And I think that's something that a lot of people, I'm a lawyer too, and that's a great note, when in doubt, move for a continuance and hope the witnesses don't show up. Everybody learns that the first day is civil procedure. So, uh, I think it's unfair. And I think we ought to go ahead. And that's my motion, to go ahead. Let's let whoever came to talk about this have their say. And if the applicants want to speak, great. If the applicants have additional materials and things they want to put on the record after they go back to planning commission, we can do that next month or the month after and then vote on it. And if other people want to come back and comment on that, they can do so. But I think we ought to hear them tonight. So that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion because we've done that in the past. We've taken testimony of individuals because they have come from a long distance, sometimes from, from the city. They have a special trip out. So we can take that.
So a quick question then. You're suggesting that we would hold the public hearing?
Yes.
Well, what about the applicant making their presentation?
They, they said they, they want to table themselves.
Well, they can make.
What if you're, I mean, it would seem like it would be incomplete, like we would not be fully understanding what everybody was talking about if they don't make their application.
Well, if they submitted a written thing, if they want to talk, they can talk. If they don't want to talk, they don't have to talk.
But I mean.
Probably not close the public hearing.
So we would leave the public hearing.
And then recess.
And recess.
That's what it's called.
Okay.
The next meeting.
I mean, before we get to that, if we're going to do it that way, I'll be glad to summarize what I heard at the planning.
Okay, well, we can, let's, let's get a vote on this. So you made the motion that we hold the public hearing there.
Right.
Okay, down for a second. Is any further discussion? I guess I will vote for that.
So we're taking votes, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's you now.
Finding one of the. Finding one of the votes.
And it was you then. Okay.
We've done that before. We've taken the testimony of individuals.
So forgive me if I don't know exactly how to handle this, but I'm going to try. Would you like to say anything further about your application since we're actually here in public?
Um, not now, this moment. If, if you decide to, uh, table the, um, application, then we'll be come back to the, to the board. We'll have a, a more complete, a more complete application based upon the concerns of the planning commission and the.
So David, would you please summarize what the planning commission said?
Sure.
He said, he said, he said that he said it.
Oh, he.
Well, I'm, I mean, here's, here's what happened at the planning. This is an application. It's up on, and I'm sure some of these people will correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, this is off of, was it Quan Lane?
Quan.
Right. Lane up on Chester Gap. Uh, and there's a supposedly, that was one of the issues, there's supposedly a 50-foot right-of-way from the state road into where the applicant's property begins. And applicant's property is composed of two parcels. And on their property, the right-of-way narrows down to 30 feet. Apparently, although this is one of the kind of open questions, I think that the 30-foot right-of-way is really for access across one track to the second track. And, uh, in any of it.
Could I interrupt just for a second? I'm sorry, I forgot something. Did we agree to table this application?
No, we.
Okay. See, they're not making their presentation.
But I mean, you say the facts because there's a lot.
No, but what I'm saying is, there is a chance, the way it's been left, that we can make a decision tonight without hearing their.
Well, they weren't hearing.
Hold on, hold on. So I think just to be a little better procedure, we should determine, are we going to table this application?
I don't know.
We, we both, we did not vote to table that issue. Should we just vote, have a motion to leave the public hearing open?
Yes.
As you said, but also add that we're going to agree to table or defer the public, keep the public hearing open until the next meeting. Continue. Is that something you want to move?
Yes.
Maybe there's a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I, I would move to table that motion until we hear the public hearing.
Do we, but the motion is being voted on?
I would vote for it.
What would you do against it?
I just said I moved the table and that, that's.
So you're not going to vote on this one?
No, I said I moved the table and under Roberts' rules of order, a motion to table supersede your vote.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
No, second. No, no, he didn't say.
No, not the motion to table. No, to table, to table. Okay. Okay. Is there a second to the motion, Mr. Conick's motion to table, the motion to table? No. Okay, there's no second. I'm sorry. Okay. All, is there any further discussion? All in favor of agreeing to table the application by leaving the public hearing open until the next meeting?
You mean table the decision one?
Okay, if that's what you want to say, that's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, very good. Okay, go ahead then, Karen.
We put the facts up there.
So, yeah, the, this is in your packet. This, what I'm talking about is on the plaque. So the only part that's sort of missing is that you can only see a little bit of the 50-foot right-of-way to Quan Lane. But after it gets on the property, it's only 30 feet. So the evidence was that even though it's a 50-foot right-of-way on the plaque, the actual roadway is only about 12 or 14 feet wide. And it's gravel and it's dangerous. It has a big embankment on one side and, uh, quite.
Is this the testimony at the?
Yeah, this is the test. And most of the, most of the neighbors live over here tonight, so I'll let them. They can tell you what they're going to tell you. They thought it was inappropriate. They have children. They don't want the noise. They don't want the dust and so forth. It's a, of a commercial operation. And so, the planning commission was, uh, split, sort of, uh, and didn't, well, I don't know. They, they acted like they didn't know what to do. So when in doubt, move for a continuance. So they tabled it. And, uh, and on the grounds about the taxes, which, as I say, well, apparently, there's been some further information from this guy. They can't even compute it because they can't, they can't do that till they get the special use permit, like to catch what you do. So that, that's irrelevant. We can do that as a condition. The other thing was about what is the right-of-way, which I think is irrelevant because the built roadway is what counts under the zoning. And, and last but not least, uh, was some arrangement with the neighbors which I, I don't know about.
Which maybe we'll hear about shortly.
Which maybe we'll hear about shortly. So.
They're talking about road maintenance?
They were talking about a road maintenance agreement and apparently, there isn't one. And so, I, I don't know. They wouldn't talk about, I don't know what other things they wouldn't talk about supposedly. But they encouraged them to talk to the neighbors because all the neighbors were against it. And most of the planning commissioners thought it was, you know, not really a bad idea, but they were concerned about the neighbors being opposed to it. So they tabled it in the hopes that maybe they could work something out. Because it was my impression, and I'll just say, that was my impression, that if it, if they couldn't work something out, the planning commissioners were going to vote no. Or to recommend that it be denied if they couldn't work something out. So they gave the chance to work it out. And whether, what happened then, I don't know. They all went downstairs and that was it.
So that summarizes it?
That's the sense of it.
Okay. Um, how would we do this?
Just, just.
Okay, I'm going to open the, I'm going to open the public hearing right now. Anybody who's going to give specific information about this particular case needs to be sworn in. So you can, something, would you like? So you can, would you like to first, come forward if you will? That's what we're doing. And what is your name?
My name is Thomas Lee.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? You can, yeah, grab a seat, you can tell us what you have to say.
I've been, I moved to Quan Lane, I lived in Quan Lane in nineteen seventy. So I've been traveling the road for, to work or for some other reason, I'll probably remember a day. And what we call a road is what it's about, a car. And I had the right-of-way, it's a bad, what you, if you go in there, you're driving like the center of the road, okay? So I was coming out to work one day last week and the only way, it's so foggy, the only reason I knew my car was in the right part of the road was in a by the grass line. You couldn't see, you know, that's what you live by.
Because what, it's foggy, you say?
Foggy, we got test the gas fog. You're going. I'm on my way to, I've got, my way to the fog. But when you start going up, you get test the gas fog.
So that's like Lewis Delaware fog, where you can hear the whistle blown on the end of the inlet, but you can't see it?
And two of the houses on that road is below road level. One of them happens to be vintage, which is fifth one Quan Lane. Level one happened to be mine, which is on six one Quan Lane, which falls out right where it goes up to their property. And it has been one accident that went over vintage. And I've been looking for it, happened in mine, so people come in there, they keep, don't know how to back out, you know, people that are not familiar with the road, don't know how to back out. Or want to come down, because you've got private, you know, my, like mine, it's just private. We wear a dog and that kind of stuff, so people stop there and just talk.
Right.
And so they don't know how to back out, or skip the back out, so they'll turn around and ride at the top of my, my road. Where, when I got in back of there, I would say eight feet, maybe more.
Now, do you go through this property to get to your property or are you before you get to this property? Are you before this property?
No.
Your.
I'm the last one, in fact, they turned.
So you go through this property?
This property is in the fifty-foot driveway.
So you go through this property to get to this property?
No, no. You go past him and then you go to this property.
When you, when you come in Quan Lane, you get fourteen yards, if you press off, two drive. Each side of that.
Okay.
I have some of the driveway that comes up to both their property and my property.
That's fine, usually this is before they get to the property.
But those cars.
That's my, my car?
Yeah. Well, those, I was just up there this afternoon and those cars were parked right before I got, came to that driveway.
Oh, okay, that's our, the other house we have before we get to my house.
Okay, well then, all right, then.
We're just a car down this year.
Okay.
Are you, are you down in where that shed is?
Okay, well, that's my. Okay, this is where I come into my driveway, this is where they go up to there. It's like a. Excuse me, Mr. Karen.
No.
We don't know what you're talking about down here.
There are one thing that may have caused.
This is the property, the road going up to.
Can you print that out somehow? Can you down next time?
We can put it on board talks. And then, then that's where he goes, the car goes back, back there is where his property is.
So this is Quan Lane?
Well, all those behind is Quan Lane. That's his family, yes.
Okay, so you're talking about the traffic.
The, the, how the low ground, I mean, road level and the, and that type of.
Okay, okay.
And like I say, you can come out and visit the road if you get the gravel car. That's what we call the road. If you get off of that right-of-way, you're on foot, so right-of-way, you're on right-of-way.
Okay.
Is there a question?
Do you want to ask him a question? Okay.
I would.
Go, go. How, how long, how long is this lane here?
Hey, almost three tenths of a mile.
So it's three tenths of.
Now, I talk like Quan Lane here.
Three tenths of a mile to a eighty right-of-way.
From six ten.
Okay, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, because it came up last time, can two cars pass on the, on the gravel car on the road?
No, no.
No.
People that live on that road, if you meet somebody coming in, you're going to know where to pull off to them by. You can't pass.
Okay, the next question I have is, this accident that happened, whenever it happened, was that somebody that lived there or was that somebody else?
Yes, somebody that lived in the center one Quan Lane, which is my mother-in-law, which we, she has an interest in it, but we have access to it too.
Okay, so it wasn't the applicant's property? Wasn't somebody that was at the applicant's property, it was somebody else that had the accident?
No, it was my accident with my grandson, who was living in a, in a house.
Had the accident.
His wife went over the, went over the bank with that vintage.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure, it pulled a car, you know, like a vintage, it's pretty much.
Okay.
It can be dangerous.
Is that?
Remember the four wheel that came over the bank? The four wheel?
Oh, the four wheel, you know, it's, it's a door.
Okay, is that, is that what you have to share with us? Is that what you have to share?
Well, I have one more question, so are you opposed to this or for?
Yeah, I'm against it.
Are you for this or against it?
I'm against the, the.
Application. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Who else is there would like to speak? Someone from all of them. Okay, come forward, please.
You're. I'm Ben, Ben Atkins.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Okay, please.
I'm Ben, Ben Atkins, I live at fifty-one Quan Lane, I'm on the road there. One of the last weeks meeting, the, my board had requested the applicants to get out and start meeting people and they did come to meet with me and I had nothing bad to say about the applicants, they were seen very nice people, they have three very polite kids, I think, they're great, I like them. If the applicant was moving in that home tomorrow, I'd be the first to go out there too, welcome them to our neighborhood, I would. However, I can't accept the applicant because of basically the traffic of people coming in, don't have a clue where they're driving and if, and my feeling is, and I may be totally wrong when I say this, I feel that most of those that come in are mostly from the city, that haven't really the experience of driving in community like Chester Gap, but it's so far, you can't see your hand in front of their face. And, and again, Mr. Lee was saying, we have to, we want to live on there, adjust to people coming in, pulling in driveways, pull off on grass, shoulders, trying not to get hit. I remejored some of the road today, that road measures anywhere from nine and a half feet to fourteen feet wide. From my driveway out to Mr. Lee's, it's probably nine and a half, ten, ten, eleven feet, ten feet wide. Could, could yourself take that through there, driving slow and somebody coming in, don't have to drive that? That's what I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about these people, no. Please understand that I think they're right, but it's just to have people coming in or we don't know who they are, what's going on down there, I'm scared, I'm scared of that.
Okay.
That's all I have, so.
And you're fifty-one Quan Lane?
Fifty-one.
Okay, can he ask you a question?
So, so I think that you're against it?
Yes, he said.
As much as I hate to say it, yes.
All right, do you feel it would change the character of the neighborhood to have this kind of a use there?
Again, we don't know who's coming back there, I think it could.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is it anybody else?
Can I just say one more thing?
Oh, sure, yes.
Okay, we, we own the other house on this side of Quan Lane, because people just, they're in there the last month or two. And they have small children. And the house is, why, can you say it from the roof? Twenty feet or so, or maybe twenty-five? I mean, that would really get a lot of dust, except for, and the two of them could run out of trouble with vehicles, so they, like, what, eight, nine, ten? And the right bicep would look like a set.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is, is it anybody else? Go ahead. Now, is this general or is this about this particular?
This is.
Your name?
Jock Nash.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I have a problem with on, on this application is that we know that they've already been running a tourist home. They, they got reviews on the internet, they have a website that you can go to and a, and a, and I, I, I guess someone who makes it out to all paperwork for them, the applicant does not live in this county and they're basically an investor in this county and they want to make it a tourist home. My problem is that the definition of a tourist home, under our, our statute, it says, in the, in the statute, I continue, that the distinction between a bed and breakfast and a tourist home is that generally, those that stay in a tourist home stay for longer than a week, generally stay longer than a week or longer. So I look up generally, you know, and they say more often than not. In other words, a lot of tourist homes are being given out here and we know for mortal certainty, they're not renting them out for a week or longer. And if we ever start doing these kind of things, I think we ought to do an audit of the county to find out how many tourist homes we in fact have, what the demand is for them. Because we've had problems with non-resident owners of commercial operations on a private lane and it's dreadful, it's absolutely dreadful. And, and a small lane, we have that same thing, if the chairman is aware of. So I would like, I would like to ask that at some point, that if, if they end up approving this, that at least give them some way of endorsing, that, that make them, as a, as a condition of approval, that they show proof to the commissioner of revenue or somebody that they are in fact renting it out for a week or longer and they could put that submission in monthly or annually or quarterly or whatever. And if anything wrong would be a false statement. But there's got to be some way to control that. Debbie doesn't, not to go out there and say.
Is that just one thing I would answer that? My understanding in reading that it's in the glossary and it's the definition or of the terms. And so just, I think that was just an attempt to say what the general practice was for tourist homes, which was they were generally rented out, at least at that time or under that author's opinion, for a week or more. Now, that has probably not been the practice of tourist homes. And so what I would just suggest is that, my understanding is that is not a requirement or a standard, it was just a description, that's.
I've heard this before, I would ask for those.
No, I disagree. So basically, if that is a problem, then we should probably look at changing the standard. Because I think to, what's the word, audit people and put them to that trouble over a description of what someone thought the general practice was, may not be appropriate, whereas it would be if it was a standard.
Well, I can, yeah, I, I, I agree with the chairman that this was probably put in there for a reason. It was probably put in there for the, for the piece of vinyl neighbors so that they wouldn't have constant turmoil. But I would ask one thing, that if they're not going to, if that's not, if that's not a requirement, generally means more often than not, this has got to be measured for a week or more. If that's not a requirement, then we have to go through the code and maybe highlight the things that don't make any difference. Or, or we've been doing it the other way for so long, this no longer applies. Because I am very, very concerned that we, I have interest in this county and I, I depend on the, on the, on the plain meaning of, of statutes. And, and so that's, I have been.
But I would say that our practice, and I think I speak properly, has been, we have so far not required that there be a week or longer continuation of the state as any type of condition ever before. Now, if that is a real problem, that may be an efficiency or something that needs to be clarified, but, thank you.
Just an additional comment is because we're using the words Airbnb, people immediately go to thinking about B and B and a B and B is where a, there's a person who hosts who's the, the family owner, either right in the building or just, you know, a step or two away, is for a bed and breakfast, whereas tourist, the owners are all sight.
Yeah, well, I would, I would just say that I would, I would oppose this simply because it doesn't fit in with the county's comprehensive plan and then all of these things are done zoning is for the landowners and to protect the residents, the current residents here.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Is there anybody else here, I guess come forward if you're.
May I make a general comment?
Sure.
Can I sit or is this only for?
Please. No. What's happening? Come forward.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not talking directly to the applicant.
You're.
Making general comments?
You are?
I'm here, wait.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I.
Grab a seat, then.
Thank you. I've been looking forward to the, the opportunity to talk with the BCA members. You might remember that I had a vested interest in the DOT application that came before you. And I think Jennifer Atkins, in the process of denying the DOT application, summed it up best when she said, and if I'm not exactly right, you can correct me, but I believe your statement to the Dots ultimately was, you decided to spend money on your property and we, the county, don't owe you anything. And I think to complement what Jock just said and to complement what Jock just said, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to talk about statutory provisions of the zoning ordinance. I want to talk about what I think is a huge potential threat to Rappahannock County's note. You have Airbnb lobbyists in Richmond basically pushing for changes to the law that would deem moot all the good work that you do to control who operates what and where in this county. I don't think this is any different than what happened years ago when this county decided to keep this county the way it is with the twenty-five acre move. When I hear Mr. Lee and Mr. Atkins speak without sounding dramatic, my heart aches for them. When I heard Clyde Poland sit here and speak on the DOT application, Clyde Poland, who did work for the Dots, came here for the first time ever in a public meeting and ultimately said, I don't want to have a different neighbor every weekend. What makes this county valuable? What makes this county valuable is that it's small, we have just over seven thousand residents and that generally speaking, we know our neighbors. The dynamics have changed over the years. I came here as a weekender, full disclosure. When I had my house as a weekender, did I rent it out, did that ever occur to me? I did not. Probably at the time, there was no mechanism to do it anyway. Now we have Airbnb and HomeWay.com and it is easy for folks, like the Coontes, who I'm sure are great people, as I think Mr. Lee and Mr. Atkins both said, they don't have any issue with the applicants. I didn't have an issue with the Dots, in fact, I didn't oppose the Dots application. What I opposed was the fundamental challenge of the way that I live. And I believe that if we go down this slippery slope and if we collectively, the BCA, the planning commission, board of supervisors, don't spend time figuring out a way to stand up against Richmond, to stand up against Jill Holtzman Vogel and the lobbyists who are on her to change the law, to basically strip you of your authority to protect your own community, then pretty soon Clyde Poland's going to move. Mr. Atkins is going to move. Mr. Lee is going to move. Because soon, this small community that we all invested in, in the truest sense of the word, will not be the community that we bought into in the first place. And I've, I've read, just in passing, articles about coastal communities in Nova Scotia. On a weak Canadian, weak Canadian dollar, European investors have come in one by one and have bought up properties in these small communities that are not unlike our own. And those communities increasingly are bereft of actual residents. They're Airbnb communities. Is that where we're headed? I hope not. So all I ask, we can talk every time one of these applications come up, about whether a road is safe, or whether the right way is wide enough, or whether neighbors dispute it or not. I think there are two tests here, two right-line tests that we can apply. And I'll leave it to Jock and others to figure out if we can do it legally. But let's take control of our county, and let's start by saying, if neighbors oppose it, deny it. Deny it, period. Whose voice counts more than mine, or Mr. Atkins, or Mr. Lee, or Clyde Poland? Who counts more than that? Deny it. And if, if you're an outside investor who are, and you are not a resident of this county, you don't have the right to rent your property. And you might say to me in criticism, "Hey, Kier, you're basically undercutting one of the pillars per county, and that's tourist business." And I can go down a long list of all the great residents of our county who are fully invested in our tourist economy. Chris Bird, Mary Jane Capella, they have a rental property on their property, they oversee it, they manage it. It has no adverse effect on their neighbors, and they give a lot to our community. Ray Bach and Barbara Adolphy in Sperryville, they have operated a wonderful tourist home in the village of Sperryville. They give back to our community. Those are, those are perfect examples of people who are invested in our community, who live in our community, and give back to our community. And I don't doubt that the Coontzes will want to become part of our community, but during the interim period, while they try to figure out how to generate some revenue from a house that otherwise sits empty, is it fair to their neighbors? Is it fair to their neighbors who have lived there for decades to let them do what they want to do to recover a few dollars along the way? And I think the answer is clearly no. And I understand this isn't going to be easy to resolve, but if we don't get a handle on this Airbnb challenge, and I use that term generally, we're all going to have Airbnb fatigue, because we're all gonna be here every Wednesday night when you meet, and we're gonna be at the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission, so let's take control. This is a huge issue for our county. Let's, let's get it under control.
I do have one question, and I think Mr. Comet could answer this. You've studied, are you, um, isn't, isn't the Airbnb being allowed by the state only if the principal residence, it's the principal residence of the owner?
I, I don't have, that's a good question.
But it's, I think that's true.
I, I don't have the, well, what happened, just to follow up, and I think it's a good question. Is the, the legislation, maybe Peter is here, or maybe he can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the legislation actually passed, passed both houses, and somehow, when it was on the way to the governor's mansion, or whatever, to be signed, uh, I don't, I don't know what happened. But actually, John McCarthy predicted that might happen, and in fact, it did happen. They just decided to somehow kick that can down the road for another year and study it.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and, but the, but the provisions that were agreed to did say that, that, uh, the only Airbnbs that are going to be exempt from local zoning is an Airbnb where it is the primary residence of the proprietor, and they, they're there all the time, which is a very different animal than this, and I, I, so does that answer your question?
Oh, yes.
I wanted to comment too, to Mr. Whitson, and say, "Thank you for coming, because that was a very eloquent explanation, better than I could do, and I wish you would come to the Planning Commission, because they are dealing with new definitions about this very topic right now, deal with a comprehensive plan, and there's one or two people on the Planning Commission who basically think that we should open up the whole county to Airbnbs, and I have expressed my opinion that publicly and privately, that, I mean, I read what's, and I handed it out tonight, the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to protect the existing landowners and property, and property values, just like you said, and protect the community, and, uh, and, uh, so I agree with everything you said, and, but they need to hear it, because there is a move on, on the part of some of them to liberalize, uh, what is allowed under our zoning ordinance, even without the Airbnb, in other words, they want to make the Airbnbs available everywhere, regardless of the right of way, regardless of the access. And I have to say that, uh, when you live on a small, especially when you live on a small road, and I live on one too, that's a, that's a, it's basically a, it's a public road, but it's not a normal state road, and for all intents and purposes, it's a private road similar to this, and I'm the first driveway off of it. And so if there was to be one of these operations behind me, A, it would change the character of the neighborhood, because it's a commercial use, look at the zoning ordinance, it's listed as a commercial use. And when you have a commercial use, it's not residential, it's not agriculture, and it changes the character of the neighborhood, exactly as you and the other people who have spoken have said, and I don't know what the other people are gonna say, but, uh, it definitely has an impact on people and their lifestyle, and their property values, and everything else, and I think we should take, I think we're required under the ordinance to take note of that. So, anyway, and I'm happy to have the applicants hear that, because if they have an answer to it, I'll be glad to hear what it is. Now, or next month, or whatever they want to do it.
I really want to thank you for your time, I know your time is valuable. Um, needless to say, I had something to get off my chest, um, but since the DOT application became somewhat contentious, and because I, for better or worse, got pulled into the middle of that, I tried to step back a little bit, and tried to find some objectivity in the way that we all should view these types of challenges to the way we live. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Uh, well, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Lee. I just have a question for you guys. We've had a lot of accidents on our hill, and Benji has had a couple on his hill, and some close calls in the fall. Now, if someone gets hurt, whose insurance, whose liability is that?
I don't think we have an answer for that.
So that's putting that, that you don't have an answer, but I'll bet you our insurance agent would have an answer. And we had a young lady turn around at the top of our lane, and she just came over for a bank. And then, in the early years, when we first moved there, before we had all the bushes grow up, so the dust wouldn't be so bad, there was a young girl came over our bank on a bicycle, and she broke her arm. So we tried to back down that too, by having all the bushes behind our house.
Okay.
This is Lee, I, I'll try.
These are great people. This lady is a great lady. We would love to have you guys for our neighbors, we really would. But dig as deep as you can to make sure that it's safe, in case things work out for you.
So what do you want to answer?
Ms. Lee, I just wanted to say that part, we, we can't answer that exact liability question, a due diligence, because I guess that depends on what's.
Saying one of these tourists was to get.
Right, right.
Our.
I, I don't know, because, uh, it depends on where it happened and how it happened. But one of the things that we have to take into consideration, uh, in, in, in voting on this, when we get around to doing that, is, is danger and congestion and travel and transportation, or loss of life, health, or property from fire, flood, and so forth, or other dangers. That's one of the considerations that, in the zoning ordinance, that the board has to take into account when it votes on this. And so the, that's why the testimony of the road, and the accidents, and the traffic pattern, and so forth, is all very important, because it is directly related to that finding. We, we have to make a finding that it will be safe, and that it won't cause congestion, or undue congestion, or overcrowding, or pose a danger, either in traffic, or to the children, and all that. And if the board cannot make that finding, it can't grant the permit under the ordinance. So if they follow the ordinance, and that's the testimony, then there's your answer, then hopefully it'll be a moot point.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Is yours general, sir? One of us got sworn in.
Well, it's Sean Nick.
No, he can speak, I'm not, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll start again. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
This application to me.
Did you say the name at all?
Sean Nick, Chanting Miser.
Nick.
Hey, guys.
Okay, yeah.
This application to me is somewhat similar to the Dots, that Mr. Whitson and all of us came and spoke about. You can speak about Airbnb, and already rented it, the Dots have been well-liked, and rented theirs for three months prior before coming to this board. Mr. Nash just spoke, yes, it's on Airbnb, with eight reviews, I just read it the other day, how beautiful it is to look from Chester Gap down across the mountain. Well, I'm here to tell you, that I don't know everybody in this room, but I know most of them. And I know myself, Mr. Lee, and Benji Atkins live in Chester, lives in Chester Gap, and I lived in Chester Gap when I first was assigned to this camp. Until you live in the, in Chester Gap, and are exposed to the fog and the snow, when it's six inches of snow in Chester Gap, and it's raining in Front Row, you do, really don't know what you're getting into. And us. I myself lived on one of the private roads, matter of fact, Seminole Road, which was within the HOA that was set up many years ago, that Benji can testify to, of where the neighbors were contributing, to contribute a hundred dollars in nineteen eighty-eight to, for stone gravels and snow road, of which it probably never got done, right? Unless you shoveled your own cell back. Now, irregardless of being on Airbnb, and I realize the tourists and people investing in the community, there's a place for everything. But one thing that I, that I want to make a point about is public safety, number one, and the neighbors, number two. Public safety is number one. That road that they live on is very narrow, just as Seminole Road is, Blue Ridge Avenue is, and all the other roads off of Route Six Ten to the top where you get to the bar. There is no place for two vehicles to pass, and as both are safe, you have to know where you're coming to be able to pull over, or you're gonna have an accident. Now, no disrespect to anyone nor of Rattan County, but we all know how most people drive from this region through Route Two S down the city. So when they come here, they're looking at the leaves, they're looking at the trees, they see a barrier they're stopping the road, they stop to keep from running over a squirrel. Now, what kind of danger is that gonna put on a road that's ten foot wide, irregardless to Mr. Lee's new neighbors, who has children riding bicycles? Now, there was a day in town where I live, and Mr. Whitson lives in Harris Hollow, that you can probably ride a bicycle. Today is dangerous, because they tire and shift it out of the flow. So when you take a neighbor that moves to Chester Gap, which, as we're all probably aware, is probably the most economical place to reside in Rattan County, and you have children, and you're, they're riding on bicycles, and you have someone, and no disrespect again from Washington DC, or wherever, coming for a weekend, and there is a child that they're not used to, then what are they gonna go into? They've already heard of ice control. God forbid that we ever have it, but I hope you take that into consideration, number one. Number two, I think as Rattan County, when I came to this county in February of nineteen eighty-nine, I fell in love. I rode into Sperryville before it was a four-lane, and I said I would never leave, and I haven't left. And all of you aware of what I came here for, and I've been here since nineteen eighty-nine, because I love it the way it is. I think you really have to take the, the neighbors' perspective, and look at what, how they feel, and what they have dealt with, and what they've always lived. There's a time and a place for everything. Mr. Lee has lived there many years, I have not known him as many years as I've known Benji Atkins, and I knew his father two weeks after I came here, and therefore, he was born and raised, he never left. And he built his ice facility. He's a highly respected person within the community, highly respected person within the community, and as everyone is in these public communities, and I can only imagine how they would feel, just like we felt with the DOT application. The road of the DOT app, what the DOT application was, was twelve-foot wide, and it's a public road. And the house sitting ten foot, twelve foot off the road, and they've now put an eight-foot front porch on. So, and they say they're gonna rent it, that's irregardless. But my hopes is that you would take what they have to say into consideration, and as well as the public interest as well as safety, because that road, that is a private road, and I think you have to look at a road maintenance agreement, if there are landowners that they're maintaining, and Benji is so-called, maybe Benji scrapes it one month, or Mr. Lee has somebody scraping it another one, and these folks over here, who I'm sure are great people as the Dots are, who's gonna pay for the commercial use and for the stone road and the snow road, and the maintenance on their road? Because it's gonna have an impact on these people more than it is the owners. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, go ahead. Are you speaking on this application?
Yes.
Facts about it, come forward. Mr. Chairman, this general, I think. You're doing.
My name's Marion Brad.
Oh, so how, um, you swear to tell the truth, how you're yourself, and that's the case?
I did.
And are you familiar with this application?
I'm familiar with it, and I wanted to come and talk today, because, um, I'm a name. It's Marion Brad. Because when I saw this, it sort of hit a sore nerve. Um, I'm a neighbor to, um, to Sean Nick and, and Kim Whitson, and we recently had a similar application, the DOT application. And so, um, I, I just wanted to come and, and speak in support of the Chester Gap residents, or against this. As you know, all the neighbors in our neighborhood were against the DOT application, and you denied it, and so I'm asking that you do the same thing here. Uh, the, the traffic from people from the city unfamiliar with these narrow roads, um, it just changes the character of the neighborhood. And a lot of these county roads, especially ours, it was a lot of farm traffic, farm vehicles, and animals, and hay. And, you know, I understand that, um, a tourist home on a small acreage like this is really not the norm in the county, and I just don't think it's very good precedent. So I just wanted to, to come and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, I was, hopefully we can wrap this up. Is it?
It's a general.
Okay, go ahead. What is your name?
Uh, Paige Lanning. Do I need these one?
No, you can just, is it general?
Uh, I'm a little confused. So Mr. Nash talks about the definition of a, of a person in this, and you say, "Well, that's not the fact." Well, why do we have an ordinance if it's written? If it's written, then I don't understand what the ordinance is for.
Did you look at the ordinance?
Hmm?
Did you look at the ordinance?
Yes.
You read this part?
Yes. So I.
Yes.
So, yeah, that, that's my new retirement hobby, is reading ordinances, and I always, I read back often, and. Exactly, all right? Mr. Comet, uh, the issue of a building permit that was done without, uh.
Zoning.
Zoning, all right? And I'm, don't want to bring up other histories, but there's issues associated with the process of users in a bunch of other places. My concern is, what is going on? Why do we have ordinances if we're not following what they say? If we're not doing the, I mean, why bother even having? Let's just sell all those electrons, all right, and move on, if it's practice, or if it's this, or if it's that, or if someone else can influence? We need to be working, my concern is, we have some process problems, and we just moved it to the end of the meeting, because we really don't want to talk about it. All right? Really? Someone builds something, but they don't have a permit, that they get a permit, and our county messes up, and we're not like jumping out of our seats doing something? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Read tomorrow's Rattan News and see my article.
Okay. Um, well, see, I'm gonna call the public, I'm, I'm gonna close the public meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna recess the public meeting until the next meeting, when we're gonna reopen and hear this. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just before you do that, could I just add one second to, I want to make sure that's.
It speaks to continuance or both of them.
I think we agreed to continue the meeting, I'm keeping the public here open until the next meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I think it is, I just wanted to look it up.
It's, it's continuance.
Where, where do you see that?
No, I, I know.
Okay.
I read by law, so I'm not sure.
All right, so...
I think everybody understands what we're doing, I just want to make sure we do the, use the right word, because if they use the right word, then they have to re-advertise it.
Okay, so I think we used the right word.
Yes.
Do we need a motion, do you think, in a second for that, or have we already?
No, no, we took care of that.
We already took care of that. Okay, so we are continuing this meeting and leaving the public hearing open until the next meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, when the applicants make their application, if any of these folks or any other folks want to comment on any additional information that comes out, they are welcome to do that.
Because the public hearing is still open.
Right, but they can speak again if they already spoke.
And I would just add, hopefully it would be something new.
Hopefully.
Okay, that would be a goal. Okay.
Maybe there's some things that were said that need to be heard again.
The next item on the agenda is the Harmony Manor Vet and Breakfast Appeal. They've appealed Debbie's letter, and I am actually recusing myself from this discussion because I have...
Who, what, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, one thing before you take off, Mr. Odom, could we amend whatever was under, just to clarify, that I don't know if you could be making any additional submissions, but could we have like a deadline for them, if they're going to submit any additional documents or exhibits or whatever, they can do it by a certain date?
A few times together.
Like the week, like the Wednesday before?
Yeah, personally, what I, what I was planning to do is to submit everything to the planning commission, that way the planning commission will have a full packet, and then they can submit that, um, well, a week's time.
So it'll be at least, but we'll get at least a week for this?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the, um, Mr. Conick or she'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on this next application, I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Matthews, the vice chair, and I'm recusing myself because I have a conflict of interest, because I have a listing agreement on the property that is the subject of this discussion. So I'm going to go over here and sit down for a minute.
Sixty.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixty-five Clark Lane.
Sixty-five Clark.
In Washington.
As I am presenting that word, I will not be your secretary, so I will excuse myself and be in the office.
Well, then if it's on the tape, then it can be transcribed.
Yes, it's a letter.
We'll get some help.
Okay.
We'll have to sail the boat ourselves.
We certainly will. All right, uh, we have received a letter, oh, we have a packet, I knew that was a letter that Ms. Tyser wrote to the Harmony Manor LCC about, that they no longer had, I don't know what the words were, um, since the turnout's not installed, that they had not met all the requirements within, for the year's time for that. So what I would like to do, um, we need to discuss how we're going to move forward with this, and I would like to ask, uh, the attorney, Peter Luke, if he has any comments in direction for us, if he would come forward, that would be helpful.
Okay, can I get a brief?
Yes, you may, twins.
Um, I can't give you legal advice on the counsel for the county, Tony Administrator in this case, uh, what I'm saying is, I'm saying this is not for the county. Um, I think, hopefully, there was a motion, an agreed order to continue this, um, in the, in the, uh...
Yeah, he got one.
Uh, what happened, Mr. Westover is the counsel for the person who's appealed this. He couldn't be here, he's on vacation. I was on the gate until ten o'clock last night, and he was on vacation. Uh, so when we, we, he filed, when we got his appeal, it was on the twentieth of July, so he couldn't go on to the last meeting. So this is the first meeting where this is brought up. There was, um, some confusion, might be too strong a word, as to exactly how to proceed in this case. As Ms. Tyser indicated, she cannot serve as your secretary or any factor, any factor because she is ordered, it's her, it's her order that's being appealed. Uh, under your, um, under your rules, it states as that, that, uh, the gentleman cannot act as your secretary, uh, in the case of an appeal of their decision. That means you have to designate another person to act as secretary or get a court reporter, according to your, your own rules. Furthermore, it says that this cannot be advertised for public hearing until the secretary, if you don't have it, determines that all the filings necessary have been filed. So, when I talked this over with, with counsel, uh, Mr. Westover, he said, look, he couldn't be here, we don't know what you're going to do about who's going to be your secretary, and, and, and all the secretaries should keep the minutes, because if there's an appeal, we call the rip to the circuit of court, that's a record that comes forward. Someone has to determine his application to be at this point, that's the person designated by you to serve as your secretary. So, we came up with this agreed order, uh, saying that we would continue this matter over to your next meeting, giving you time to...
It's September.
Giving you time to do whatever you want to do. Once again, I cannot advise you as to that, but giving you time to, let's get your ducks in a row, uh, and then set the hearing from there. Uh, under the code, you have ninety days, in the application, this was received on July twenty, you have ninety days to make a decision. Now, I know, Mr. Conick, I've seen some emails flying around today, questions, because we, we put in here that, that both sides are agreeing that ninety day rule, to the extent my thought, you wouldn't have, have you here within the ninety days, and there's no issue. If you don't have it within the ninety days, uh, we decided that, we both agree, you would still have jurisdiction. And there's a case, David, the Tran case, that says that shall, on this case, is, is directly not mandatory.
And this, and that stashing?
Yes.
That particular stashing?
That's right. It held that, in that case, it was five hundred and fifty days after the, after the appeal was filed, the party, the birthday continuances, and five hundred and fifty days later, the, the, the DCA ruled, case went up to the district court, said, well, it's not, it's not a mandatory, it's a discrepancy, it's called a directory requirement. So, in other words, I don't think that's worth of the ninety days. Both of us have agreed, we're not going to place that as an issue for you. So, what I'm here today to ask for is that you issue that order, or if you want to change it, I, I put it so that you would, you could take a majority vote, uh, of you to continue this, it's a decision that the board has to make, um, and put a line in there for you to do that. Uh, if you wanted to go ahead and set it, uh, for a specific date, you can certainly, certainly do that, I, I want Mr. Westover, he'll be back next week. Uh, I will, I will say that I'm a little up in the air about, to advise you, how long this hearing is going to take, until I get with Mr. Westover. My view of it is, and I think this is clear from the letters that you have, is that most of the facts can be stipulated to. I don't think there's a real question about the facts in this case. I think he's arguing a legal point, essentially, I call him equitable, but his lies entitled to some considerations, he way away. But, um, the reason I bring this up is because that actually, how many witnesses do you have to listen to? And I'm hoping I can get with Mr. Westover, we can stipulate to a lot of the facts in this case and just present it to you on, on the law, question of law.
So, so it may not be on the, the twenty something, September?
Yeah, we, we put in there that that would be a control date, that is, because you will, kind of, you have to decide what you're going to do about getting a, a secretary, you also can request your own counsel, to the board supervised. Uh, I don't think, I don't know if we have any money in the budget for counsel or not, but...
They're not paying our help here either.
Well, you can request the board, I'm not saying they're going to do it, but, uh, and this is not that unusual situation, it's oftentimes when the county is one of the parties, the county attorney's conflicted out from...
Well, would someone like Paul Mitchell be the person who would come in that would represent us?
That, he's only insurance counsel.
He's only insurance counsel.
I mean, if, you, he could be retained by the county, back then, I don't know, the county could, what they would normally do is they would appropriate a certain sum of money, and then you have to, you to get your own attorney. That attorney is your attorney, but not the county's. And I may pay for that attorney, but, but that attorney would represent your interests. So, uh, you would be the one who would select that attorney. And I can't advise you as, one way or the other, about who that should be, whatever you've got, using a good judgment.
And then, who's the default, um, temporary clerk of the court?
Well, the, the way the rules and regulations mean, it's just...
Where could we designate?
Huh? I know, where could we designate, but has there been a certain person that, we haven't done it like this before, so has there been a certain person that, that we would designate to do that?
You can designate one of your members, and also, hold on a second, I'll figure how this would work, you can say, you can have a court reporter. Now, the court reporter just takes down the, the transcript, the hearing, it's not really administrative duties, whereas your secretary has to actually determine, under your, under your rules, this application is complete, that everything is necessary, that they pay the necessary fees, and then you can advertise. So, uh, the best reading I have of it is, it's normally one of you.
Well, last time that this came up, I think I appealed a decision of drama parties, and if I recollect, you, Dr. Matthews acted as the clerk, it looked like the same situation.
That, that is, that is true, I did act as the secretary, and I had to come over to the office a couple of times to make sure everything was fine.
So if you're going to be the acting chairman, since...
I cannot do that.
No, the chairman, you're going to be the chairman because Alex is...
I know, I mean, I can, I will be the chair.
So I'll be glad to be the clerk, if that's what you want to do, that's...
And the clerk, he'll be with the board also.
And then, the other thing that I would suggest about the court reporter, I mean, as far as the paperwork and getting all the papers distributed to whoever has to get it, in other words, all the members and who they filed with and all that, I'm happy to do that. And as to the court, I would say, I'll be the clerk for that purpose, and then, what, let's see what's going to happen, because I feel certain, uh, that Mr. Westover is going to get a court reporter anyway, probably, so maybe you can tell us that, Mr. Lee, and then if that's not the case, I'll communicate with board members by email before the meeting, and, uh, we'll, maybe we'll line someone up temporarily, and I think really, we ought to get one, and we'll tell them that the Dominion, that's the nearest one, and they do all the stuff, they've done it before, and then we'll have them on, and then we'll decide who's going to pay for it now, and maybe we'll split it. But, that's what, that's what they do in a bulk case, I mean, the party split it or something like that, but I think that the, the, the colleagues are going to get a court reporter. If they don't, and we feel we need one, then we can, we can do that. We don't have to decide that, but I, but I'll be the clerk if you want me to be.
So then, but how we know that it's official email coming to us?
Well, if you get it from me, it'll be official, just like when you did it last time, you...
Well, there's been more, more information, I mean, more stuff coming out about when they're emailing you, about what accounts and so forth.
Well, you would have to, these would be, the secretary will keep your minutes with that he designated. You still have, have to approve the minutes.
All right.
Okay, that has to be approved, just like the regular minutes are, you know, you keep your minutes of this, of this hearing, uh, and those minutes will be approved by the board in, you know, totally, and of course you can amend, amend them if you see fit, or if the majority sees fit. So, uh, but, once again, I can give you advice, but, but I would say that normally, as you know, what you've done is, you've got, one of your members is secretary, you have a tape, you know, which you can, they don't like to do it, but court reporters can transcribe off the tape. Uh, so, the, the problem of having a court reporter is expense up. And Mr. Conick suggested the party should split it, I'm sure the board supervisor is going to want to split the cost of the court reporter, but that would be a decision I'll have to do then.
Well, another, excuse me, another, another thing you can do, folks, is you get the court reporter to transcribe, and he'll charge you a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars now, I think it was a hundred and sixty. Then, if anybody wants, we don't need the transcript unless somebody's going to appeal it, and so then they can pay for the transcript from the court reporter. All we have to do is pay the appearance fee, which is a hundred and fifty dollars. So I'm sure that Debbie Copeland will cover it, and I'll be glad to contact her and line that up, once we set a date, and then we'll sort out who's going to pay, and what, you know, what the part about the transcript comes later anyway. Maybe they'll win and they won't.
Yeah, no matter who, yeah, it may or may not have been a deal. So, so that's where, you don't want to get, put a lot of money in that record if nobody's going to appeal it.
Okay. So, are the attorneys for the two parties still talking once we get past vacation?
You mean the two parties being in, in actual underlying litigation?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't, I don't know that, uh, I, I know that, there, well, has been some conversation between them, but I don't know that that's advanced, and I can't go to comment on, on if it's likely to bear fruit, so to speak. Um, so I, I can't answer that, and I know Mr. Westover has, um...
Because there's actually two issues going on, one's between the administrator and the, um, not, uh, fourth, and then between the four.
We can't really control that, we got this, okay, so we have to deal with it. And the question of that, guys, we've got this other thing that we continued, and I think maybe, I don't know what's the pleasure of the rest of you, but I think we ought to have a separate, if we do it the same day, we ought to do it at, maybe in the afternoon or something like that, and maybe that'd be better for the attorneys, you know, they don't like to work at night. So, uh, because we're going to have these other things, and on the docket, maybe we should have it at four o'clock or three o'clock or something like that, uh, or, or one o'clock, right, after lunch, something like that, I don't know if you can all make it, either that'll pick another day.
My preference would be, as I say, you've got to tell the, to the next meeting to get your ducks in a row and decide what you want to do. Uh, I do think you might want to have this on a separate day. Uh, I do have a propensity with, with Mr. Reximer, I spoke to him today, he's going to be gone from the country after a certain date, so I'd like to try to accommodate him, uh, and, and have this when he's going to be here. He may be a witness, may not be a witness, but Mr. Reximer, Alan, who, who lives, lives up there.
So how, how many, um, witnesses do you...
I don't, I don't know, that'll depend on what Mr. Counselor's side will stipulate to. If we stipulate a lot of the facts, I may not need any witnesses.
And, or will they be given this a certain amount of time to talk, or is it...
No, the, the, the way the code reads now, which was just amended this last year, uh, it's a very simplified procedure, it's not a trial. Um, it says, "At the hearing on an appeal, the administrator officer," that says other administrator, "shall explain the basis for his or her determination, after which the appellant has the burden of proof to rebut�s the presumption of correctness by the preponderance of the evidence." So, I mean, you read that, it doesn't say not have any witnesses in the exhibits, it says I'm going to put on this witness right here to explain what her decision is.
But it says, yeah. So it's like, is this...
Yes, yeah, but you look back and, and kind of one point on his equals her, it goes out. So, um, the, the, the way it's supposed to work, if you read this, and by the way, this section, which they just put in last year, says that, uh, "Any, any appeal of a determination to the board shall be in compliance with this section, notwithstanding any other provision of law, general or special." So they want you to go proceed like this, which is a simplified proceeding, so I don't really see that we're going to get into a big, long list of witnesses. Uh, I know, I've heard Mr. Conick seem about exhibits and, and arguments and race, I think this is designed to be a summary procedure, where you hear, you hear our side, and then the other side can't, can't rebut that, can't overcome that presumption, and then we're not...
Now, it sounds like you're giving them legal advice. And no, in that, your argument, and they're not here, so I don't think we ought to hear all that. I think we ought to talk about setting the day.
Well, he's explaining what the structure is for how this goes, how it needs to run, so...
Going a little bit past that.
Well, in, in, in any event, I've read this right from the code, so you can, you can, uh...
Okay, well, that's very helpful. Now, what do you want to do about the time of day, because we've got these, one case for sure that's been held over, and here it is, it's going to be a long night if we, I mean, I don't know how it's going to go, and I'm, I am anticipating, because I know Westover and Flip as well, and I've read their letter, they're going to put on the highway guy, and they're going to put on all this, I don't mean, I don't know if you're going to stipulate to all this.
I would stipulate to that.
You will, or you won't?
You will.
Oh.
There's no question, we, our own records show that we, we, we approved, they brought in a report from D I, and that was approved, so that didn't cross that off.
Okay.
Listen, I'm not going to argue the facts of this case, but it's really factually not a very complicated case, but in my view, I think it's going to come down to the law, and, uh...
So, because you're, you're indicating that it's not, that it's being string, could be streamlined, then do you believe we need an attorney that, your counsel?
I can't ask him that. You can't ask him a question. I can't, now, you're, you can't ask the other attorney from one of the parties whether we should have an attorney.
Well, she didn't ask me, and I...
Come on, I can't answer that.
I can't say whether you should or shouldn't get an attorney, I told you you have to write to them if you want to have one, if you can get the board... if you can get the board to come up with a mind, so.
He's taking his head no back there.
So, that's all I can say about that.
That's our decision.
So then, so, then, me as vice chair, then I would need to inquire of board supervisors?
Well, I would say first you'd have a vote among this body here, do you want to approach the board? Of course, our meeting is September the seventh, and that's one-
I guess, I'm not a lawyer, and I guess I owe you some advice, but I've read the letter, I've read the book, and to me, that's not an issue anywhere, that, I mean-
Well, that's it.
Well, good. You know, I think this is what we ought to do, Peter, thanks a lot, that's all very helpful. I think it's up to us to decide if we need a counsel at this point in time. I think what we should do since we have ninety days, when does the ninety days run out?
Well, if you sign the order, it doesn't even start running until your next meeting. Hopefully, it'd be ninety days from there, so you've got, you have the extra-
Okay, well, but assuming if we didn't do that, when does it run out?
It'd run out, assuming if it was filed on July twentieth, it's August, September, October.
We got to October. If we can't, if we have the hearing in September, and after we've heard it, there's somebody on here that feels like, "Oh, I can figure this out, and we need to get counsel," then we can get counsel.
Yeah.
And so, we, I propose that we defer that decision, and I, I mean, I don't want to prejudge the case, especially since they're not here, but I've read what the submissions are up till now, and to me, it's pretty simple, like you said, so there-
But we don't know which way they're sent.
It doesn't matter which way, it's pretty simple.
All right, so-
Good idea, I don't, I'm personally a lawyer, so I don't need-
All right, so, what we need to decide is, is there a motion that, from the members of the board, that should we solicit counsel now, or delay until after?
I move that we defer until we see what is the thing, and if we meet it, then we can do it after.
I second that.
So, the motion is defer counsel-
Right.
-until after?
I get a lawyer involved, you don't have to.
Right, September meeting, because we have until any- Okay, so, all of-
Well, I'm taking it.
Are any discussion about the motion that's been doing me in the second? Of, I call for the vote, so, number of ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. So, if form goes unanimous, that we will not seek counsel-
At this time.
At this time, until after-
All right, the next thing is the date, what do you all, what do the board feel like about the time? Do you want to have a special meeting earlier in the day, or?
Um, well, I was going to ask about the court, so, with the court reporter, will we need to make that decision at the same time and make the decision about if we need to secure counsel?
Well, you know, you have your court reporter at active hearing. If you're going to have a court reporter, I'm not saying you need one, but if you're going to have one, that person must be there at the hearing.
Okay, and then, we would be, we would-
I mean, I think we should wait on that, Dr. Matthews, because if Peter reports to us, which he will do at some point, or, I don't know if you're going to, I think the next thing we do is say who's going to be the clerk. If I'm, I'm going to find out between now and September twenty eighth, like, a couple of weeks ahead of time. First of all, I would call Debbie Wright tomorrow and reserve it, and then, I would wait the ear from Peter, well, is there going to be a whole pile of witnesses, or is it all stipulated, and we just have to look at the letter and the stipulations and decide, in which case, we don't need a transcript of that, because we don't need to transcribe what everyone says, we need to transcribe, we need to have a minutes of the vote.
Okay, all right, you had said that, so, because as he was speaking, I was writing down the things that we need to do. So, one was-
Who's the clerk, that's next.
Huh?
Who's going to be the clerk next?
So, the first was, would we be counsel, and he's given us the explanation that we can defer that until after September meeting. The second thing is, who will be, I would think, who will be the secretary for the filings and making sure that everything moves forward? I know I took that responsibility on before, and I cannot do that as the chair, so.
I was going to nominate you.
Okay. Is there a second to the nomination?
I'll second.
Okay, all the things, having Mr. Connaughton be the secretary for this, for this case only, not for the other things that go on in the odds. We spoke, aye?
Aye.
Aye. No.
I'll put that down to me. Okay, and then, so then, the third item is we need to, is this order that is there, and so, we need, I could, you all have read the order that's on the back, that we would suspend this ninety day statutory period and move things forward as best we could, so, is there a vote?
I have some issues with the order, let me get it. And that is, I, at this point in time, I don't think we should do this, I'm going to strike the part about the ninety days, just because we're going to do it in September, and we have until October, and if we need to do it at a later time, then, we can always do it, assuming the parties don't have a problem. The other thing that I would say is that the ninety day rule, the way it operates, is if we don't reverse, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the law says if we don't reverse the decision within the ninety days, then the decision stands.
That's right.
And so, well, and so, depending on how you feel about it, there you go. I just don't think we need to do that at this point in time, and that's, that's why, the other part is I would want to put in a date, like, September, if we go to the twenty eighth, I want to go two weeks ahead of time for them to make whatever submission stipulations and all that they're going to make, two weeks ahead of time, so everybody can look at it and review it, and so forth. So, those are the two changes that I would make, but those are my thoughts, and I'll do whatever the majority wants to do. I'm trying to be heard, so it's my motion.
Why, yeah, why hand yourself in, give yourself the extra ninety days, you don't know what's going to happen, somebody might break a leg or whatever, so, I don't see there's any harm by agreeing to that. I mean, both parties agreed to be bound by, if you have the hearing within ninety days, no problem. If it goes down ninety days, you've covered yourself, so.
So, and then, what is a typical procedure for submitting names of witnesses, evidence? Not that it's typical one or two of us, when you bubble up the last name, but for the bulk of the majority?
Well, that's why, that's why I read you that provision, there is no provision, the code just says, I put on the zoning administrator, she gives her rationale, and you can take judicial notice of all the documents that are essentially in your own file, most of them. And then, the other side gets to put on their case, and if they haven't overcome the presumption that her decision was correct, and convinced three of you, then, county wins.
Okay, so, so, you're not anticipating there'll be massive amounts, just orders, okay. So, if there were to be anything, two weeks is a typ, would be a typical thing?
I don't know if it's typical, but I mean, as long as I can get a hold of Mr. Westover, I'm sure if I work things out, you know, by two weeks before the, before the hearing.
Okay.
And that being mainly stipulations, I, you know, my view of it would be best to see my stipulation, get all the great facts out of the way, so don't argue about things that we both agree to. Okay, just focus on what it, what it really is.
All right.
All right, so, I move to change the order then, the first paragraph where it says, at the end of the third line, "The board set is continued," it says, "for scheduling purposes only," I want to put, strike those for,
Finish.
For settlement, or for scheduling purposes only, and change it to "for hearing" with a deadline of nine September fourteen, two oh one six, for any pre-hearing filings.
I suppose that is to conclude the break room, Monday?
Nothing changes till it's, gets down to the last, the line that begins, "This board set for twenty eighth September, two thousand and sixteen," strike the word "settlement, scheduling purposes only," and insert "hearing," and then add, "With a deadline of September fourteen, two thousand and six, for any pre-hearing filings."
Peter, you have this, we have to fix this up and clean it up.
Yeah, well, I've got original here, and I just need somebody to hand me out, change it if you want.
So, I'll-
Pipe it up.
And you'll get a time, and then?
Process it then.
And I'll, then I'll assign, because I think we need, we will just take, we'll take our full amount of time, we should probably finish it on the twenty eighth. All right, so now it comes to, we know the date is the twenty eighth, and we need to think of the time. Everybody who was from Chester Gap were, now knows it's seven o'clock in the evening, so it is not, for they, they should not be inconvenienced by saying that they got to show up at three o'clock, and we do this at seven o'clock.
No, 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 I meant that we would have this at a separate time, and let that go on at seven.
So, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, so that would be at seven, so if we were to do this, then we should probably do this earlier in the afternoon, on the twenty eighth.
But, so that's on Wednesday, right?
It's on Wednesday, so the day's blocked.
It should be the fourth, yeah, the fourth Wednesday.
Do you have a calendar?
I would be happy to come anytime, so-
So, twenty eighth is-
My twenty eighth is a normal day, it's just a question of time.
Okay.
It's a courthouse, do we know if the court can hold?
I do have a conflict, I have twenty two attorneys, I'm just having to wrap it, but I can change that.
She's-
You're tired.
How about in the morning?
I'm okay, I'm heading in the morning.
I'm okay in the morning.
I'm okay in the morning.
Ten a.m.?
Ten a.m. So, ten a.m.?
Ten a.m. in the courthouse, or I guess we'll have it here, subject to Peggy Collins, we can have it really, if there's no court on this.
I guess there'd be a private court, we'll have to find that out tomorrow.
We're not going to have it here, we'll just have it over.
But, but we've gone to other rooms, as long as not the nine a.m. room, I cannot take that.
The problem is you're going to have to advertise this, you've got to put the location in your advertising.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll file up tomorrow, if Peggy can handle it enough.
Not the nine a.m. room.
What's the nine a.m. room, does that make sense?
Four was denied, or the frauds were-
So, we want this order- We've worded, so it's going to be, the hearing is going to be at ten a.m. on September twenty eighth.
Yeah, at ten a.m.
Okay. And I have to, you know, I, Mr. Westover, I endorse this order, he may not endorse that order, I mean, he may have to object or something, we're doing it to other people, so I'll just tell him that.
But the time, the time would be his objection, this other stuff with the-
No, he's agreed to all that, just the time, because we're changing the topic.
Okay, so, I would like to take a little, and then again, come back at seven, eight, seven.
I move that we adopt or approve the order in all process, we decide it as amended.
As amended.
I will second that motion.
All right, does that end the information that we need about harmony policy, or a, you know, I say harmony policy.
Manner.
Manner, I know it's manner, but I'm-
That's a group.
Yeah, all right, so I would like to return the chairmanship to Mr. Sharp, and I'd like to ask this Kaiser to come back in his due diligence, as secretary to the board.
I was doing that. You were, I was. Okay, um, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item, and I'm just going to bring up one that occurred to me in tonight's meeting, it's a perfect example of this, and it has been my impression in the past that when the planning commission tabled or for some reason did not make a recommendation, we have typically continued or tabled it ourselves. And the question is, I think, do we make everybody come to the meeting? And then, still have to come to another meeting, and I think in this case, the applicants are not here, but they had to come a long distance to get here, they have an attorney. It was unclear really, the way this was run tonight, whether we had a full hearing, we, you know, they didn't really present their case, there were people here who wanted to speak, we let them speak, but I'm sure come next month, the same people are probably going to want to speak again, and probably on the same thing. My, my hope was that we would have a mechanism whereby, in a timely fashion, about a week or a little less before the meeting, that the chairman could make a decision to go ahead and remove the item from the next agenda and move it to the following month. And the reason being, so that we save a lot of people a lot of time, and that's basically because tonight, I feel like we have, you know, about an hour and something hearing that is going to be repeated next month. And I think, you know, whatever reason the planning commission tabled it, I think that they're looking for more information, and I don't know what's going to come of that, but we would have more complete information if the planning commission had come up with a recommendation. And so, rather than hold two public hearings on items, I would like to see if there'd be some mechanism for-
Is there time available to advertise after the planning, because that's the problem that I see.
Well, no, but the people who are in interest could be notified.
But how do you know that? That's, that's the, but here's the problem that I see, and, well, too bad it's a crazy life, but keep on the planning. But you can tell them that, so. You know, the planning commission, to my way of thinking, has a pretty limited role by statute, and that is to determine, to look at these, review these applications, and to decide if it's consistent with the document that they're responsible for, namely, the comprehensive plan. And, unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever, maybe just leave off the adjectives, the planning commission has its own little public hearing there about whatever anybody wants to talk about, which is really our jurisdiction, to all these other things. Their role is the comprehensive plan and to tell us, or the board supervisors, the case may be, yes, this is consistent with the comp plan, or no, it's not. But they have these long-winded hearings, they get into all kinds of issues that really have nothing to do with the recommendation, like, like this case in point, or maybe we're going to just take another case, but I don't know, is there a maintenance agreement? That doesn't end into the comprehensive plan, what they're supposed to, that's our job, to figure out if that's an issue, and if it's something we want to condition the permanent, yes or not, or could do. But they act like they're basically duplicating what we do, and that's one of the problems. And I, and I don't know how we, I guess we can't really tell them not to do that anymore, they're, they're the planning commission, they do whatever they want. But my view of it is, I'm not really interested in much of what their recommendation is other than as to the comprehensive plan, and oftentimes, they don't even get out the comprehensive plan or look at it when they make their recommendation. So, their recommendation to me is, first of all, it's optional, the statute is clear that it says "may." They may send one, or they may not. And, in this case, for example, and almost all the other cases, you know, the planning commission didn't even send a letter to us, the chairman, or tell Miss Kaiser, and I brought it up at the meeting, I was sitting there, and I said, "Hey, it's on our agenda, so before you continue it, how are you going to do that?" They just ignored it, and they said, "Well, we're going to continue it." They didn't write a letter and say, "Dear Mr. Sharp, the planning commission, you know, couldn't figure it out, so they kicked the can down the road till next month, and we would like you to await, you know, or continue your hearings." They didn't even do that, they just act like they can do whatever they want, and I don't think that's appropriate. And mostly, like I've already said, it's not fair to the people, you have to advertise it. If the, if the document, and the other problem that I see is, our rules are very clear, and it's, it's our, you know, it's our case that goes, that gets sent over to the planning commission once we advertise it. And if all this stuff, and it's not all the plaques, and all those site plans, and all the information that's- And if all this stuff, and, uh, it's not, all the plaques, and all those site plans, and all the information that's supposed to be there, is not there, then it shouldn't be advertised. And I think that's where, I mean, I know Debbie is new to this, so, I mean, I'm, this is, if it's criticism, it's constructive criticism, I think you need to make yourself, or make a checklist, or go down this stuff and not just, and if there's a question, talk to the chairman, or get somebody from the board to, to come in and look at it, and say, is this ready to be advertised or not? And let the chairman decide, uh, uh, but I think we have, that's, that to me is the key, because that has happened, how many times, in the last six months? Quite a few, the same thing, you know, oh, well, they don't have this, and the Planning Commission wanted some other information. And a lot of that stuff should have been, or could, well, should have, let's say, could have been assembled before it ever got advertised. And then you just have a smoother process all around, and I think, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Alex, but I think to do that is to encourage more of the same, more incomplete applications and more continuances ad nauseam by the Planning Commission, and I don't think we ought to go that way. I think, I think not only the applicants, but I think the neighbors, everybody that's interested, has, you know, as, as Keira Wilson said tonight, you know, if you're, if, if you're living next door to where something's going to happen or might happen, it's kind of, uh, it's, it's worrisome. And I think those people are entitled to a decision, and the same for the applicants. They don't want to, they shouldn't have to be coming back here two or three months in a row, and so I think we should discourage that. We should get it complete and make sure everything's there, so the Planning Commission can review it. Let, I think, maybe we need to suggest to the zoning administrator, or actually, in this case, she's acting as our clerk, that before it gets advertised, that she sends it to the chairman, or sends what she's got to the chairman, you're you, and the chairman of the Planning Commission, say, okay, take a look at this, is, is everything here?
But are you suggesting, maybe?
Before it's advertised.
Are you suggesting that we discontinue tabling and just go ahead and hear it?
Well, I think we ought to do something to try to avoid having, getting put in this situation at all. And I don't think we ought to have an automatic procedure, because to be quite honest with you, based on what I heard tonight, I'm completely, I, I vote on this thing tonight, based on what we heard. Because it's not going to change between now and next, next month, and besides that, if you look carefully at your zoning ordinance, you'll see that the roadway doesn't meet the standards that are required. And that's not going to change between now and next month, because they have to build the road out, and they're not going to do it.
Well, I think there's a lot to be said for what David just said, and that, uh, the, it does seem unnecessary or, or it's a poor procedure to continue things as an ordinary operation. And if it's some particularly remarkable thing, that's maybe different, so.
Well, maybe if we send a clearer message that we're not going to continue things.
Yeah.
I mean, that's hot, it's just been our custom to all.
We haven't had to do it very often, and there have been times that we went on and did hear a case without, twice, two or three times, without the Planning Commission's recommendation, and then we got this little.
The, sorry, the dot, the dot application came to you.
We've been.
No recommending, right? They said, you're, I mean, you just summarized it perfectly, but.
I mean, we have thought, we have seen, we have done this one, we have.
I, I agree, yeah, I agree with you, I'm just, I do want to figure out a way to avoid these double hearings, because it does seem like a waste of time to go over it twice.
Then we should, we should have voted, they should have voted.
Mr. Chairman.
So the vote is on, the, the, they asked you to sign, it's already signed, just to let go of it, and we're going to put it all the way until.
That's a different hearing.
December twenty eighth.
But the variance doesn't go to the.
We would, we would have taken it. It took a long, long time, and, because I first looked at Debbie and to Peter about this on June second, June second, is my, my reading. On June second, and then, and then Debbie Slater followed, followed twenty days later. Thirty days later, or twenty-nine days, the absolute limit, Mr. Westover filed the answer. Well, so he's going to depress this stuff, and that means we, he could probably go under the original, which depress it all the way until the end of December. But I, I think you, we couldn't hear, but I, did you take out that ninety day thing?
No, we left that in, we, we believe that we're going to have it.
That's six months, I mean, and this is not like the Detroit bankruptcy, it's, uh, it's pretty clear-cut stuff, and it doesn't require us six months of lawyering, in my opinion.
Okay, in this particular case, what we're talking about is when the Planning Commission is involved, which is not an, uh, appeal that you're talking about. Um, why not?
Why not?
Why not?
I, I would agree with this comment, and it's, it's amazing how he pointed out that the process is obviously broken. I would recommend that you take those issues about, you know, we're not getting quality applications, or whatever it is, alright? You take it to the board of supervisors and tell them that they need to figure out how to fix the process, because it's impacting residents, as you said. It's making them back, it's impacting your workload, but it's making things take longer than they should. So that's what, it's plainly obvious to a process engineer, that your process has got some problems in it. By doing what you were doing, all you're doing is putting a Band-Aid on a wound, alright? Let's go fix the root problem, which you have a problem in your process.
Okay, no, that's a good suggestion.
And a lot of that, we, we fix it with workforce power, and we don't have the resources for some of that. So, but, but we do have, I think we do have a checklist, um.
Okay, well, um, unless there's some consensus to, to what I said, I'm willing to defer.
Then, then perhaps we want to have a conversation with Mr. Settle, Harry Settle.
Yeah, I should do that.
And, and let him know what we, how we see it on our end, and that it is important on the neighbors and the, those who come into the, um, to the case, and then we feel, uh, we would have felt a little hesitant about moving forward, or what, what we've done.
One thing we could do is, of course, it's a hard topic, to the Planning Commission, we could, we could tell him to go tell them.
Well, then.
Well, I, I would be very happy to do that.
Yeah, that's a good.
That's my motion, that we, that we can tell him to do it.
That's a good, uh, good, uh, idea, I would agree with that.
Okay, that's my motion, so second.
And what is the motion?
To direct our representative on the Planning Commission, Mr. Burr, to advise the Planning Commission of our concerns, and that they do something to make sure that they get their recommendations to us in a timely way. And, uh, and second, that they work with our clerk to, if necessary, I mean, it's really up to her, or I, I really, I don't know if it is up to her or not, it's up to, oh, she's our clerk, and this, I mean, she's the zoning administrator, but she's also the clerk to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I mean, that's sort of a different path. So our, our regulator, our, our, our rules already say it's not supposed to be advertised till it's complete. And right now, apparently, that determination, it's complete enough to advertise, or it isn't, is being made without any input from the chairman. So it's up to you, the chairman, I think, to start doing it.
And, and I think at the same time, the chairman of the Planning Commission might be consulted.
I, I, I believe that, that you're a very positive leverage point, but I do believe it needs to be chair to chair on getting.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, but I think we should give the message through to them that we are likely to go ahead and hear cases that they have not rendered an opinion on.
Yes.
Okay, and I think if we can get that forward to them, then we can proceed and do it, and then they'll probably start making more recommendations than a possible question.
I can put on third.
No, I think that would help, yes. Okay.
Yeah, and all except all the amendments that he said.
Is there a second?
I, well, the, the discussion is, you said that there's a discussion now that Mr. Burr do what he can to leverage it, but there still needs to be a conversation.
Yeah, I'll have a conversation.
Okay.
Chair, so.
Okay, so there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the next is the minutes.
Well, do you want to do this other thing about the?
I'd do that at the end.
The fairer term, alright.
At the very. Um, now there's three minutes.
Three seconds.
I only got two in the pack.
No, that's three.
I only got eight more.
It's April, May, and June on the board terms.
Why did I not come board terms?
Here's a copy of June, I did.
I had no corrections to.
Can we just, I moved the table, Mr., because I, I have read the June ones, I want to.
Can we do April and May?
Alright.
Have you read them?
I, I read, um, but I believe that we accept the April minutes of the BZA as circulated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got some discussion, and that is that the, um, the minutes don't make any reference to my dissenting opinion in April. And I ask that my dissenting opinion be appended to the minutes. And I think that is the practice in, uh, numerous Board of Zoning Appeals all over the country.
Can you name one?
Michigan, Maine, and Massachusetts.
Michigan, the, the state or?
The state, yeah.
Michigan, okay, but not Virginia.
Well, I don't, I don't see that that is a common, or in any authorities that I could find, but, uh, maybe that's because others don't do it. Anyway, I, it's, it's, it's been filed, it's a public document, and all I want the minutes to reflect is that I filed a dissenting opinion and it's in the file. That's what I want to add to the minutes of this meeting and also the June meeting, although I didn't see the, I think it was June. Right, the crazy thing, I just want a reference to it in the minutes.
Have we decided that we are accepting dissenting opinions?
I don't think it's up to you, I don't know what you decided, it's not up to you to discuss the, the accept or not accept.
I'd like to have an opinion, or a legal, legal opinion about that, because if you just go on for hours.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, if you don't do it, you're going to get a legal opinion, because if the board doesn't append it to the, and doesn't make the change to the minutes, I'm going to take it to the circuit court judge and get an opinion from him.
That would be a good.
That would be great.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, let's not append the minutes. Okay, is there anything else? All in favor?
Of, as are circulated.
Yes.
I.
You're not, a present, okay, how about the main? Do you have anything, David?
I move that they be accepted as circulated.
Um, well, I have the same question.
But you didn't, you didn't go with a dissenting opinion, Larry, did you?
Well, it was discussed, so.
Okay, so is there a second to Jennifer's?
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
No, but, okay, June, can we do, or was it?
I moved the table, June.
Move on the table, June. Is there a second to table, June, minutes?
Well, I just got, they just got in and I haven't reviewed, and I don't really.
The, the thing with the package?
No, they weren't in my package.
They were on board.
And I didn't know that they were.
They were in the. I didn't see them, but, uh. Do you want to, why don't you just take a minute, uh, he's going to take a minute. We've gone this far.
Well, I just have the same thing about the, the, I wrote a dissenting opinion in May, and I want it to be appended to the minutes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
As circulated.
As circulated.
Absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, and further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
No, okay. Now, I'm going to leave it to you, I'm going to sit in my seat over here, while you all decide if you want to talk about the same application. Okay, because I, I do have sort of a conflict there, I'm not directly involved, but I am involved in the neighbor and the property, so.
I have new documents about, about this, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. You indicated at, at the opening of the meeting that, that there was some updates that you have, would like to give, and so in a very short list, tell us what they are, and then we'll ask the zoning administrator what she knows about the, the changes that, that you stated.
Well, okay.
Would you just like me to pick them up, too? Or would you want to?
Well, you could, sure, you could want to make it up data, and then if I'm any bad, or whatever you said, I'll say.
So, the things did submit an application that was extremely similar to the ones that they posted in the meeting. The difference is, is that they changed the names of the rooms, and they weren't guest rooms, they were bedrooms, or whatever they wanted to call it. And per Mr. Burke, a person is allowed to build a home, if they deem appropriate.
Mr. Burke?
Mr. Burke, who's the building.
Oh, Richie, but this.
Yes. Um, you can build a home to your specifications, and that is what they are doing. They will not be allowed to have a B and B unless they come back in and have a permit. They can have the three rooms, but they cannot have the additional rooms. So they have requested their home to be almost similar to what they presented, and Mr. Burke saw no issues with that. I have been to the home, and they have not had, um, a building permit noted on their doors, or on their windows, or at the property. I'll send them an email and I'll follow up with a permit letter if I go up again, I'll go up this week, I went up last week, and I agree with Mr. Burke. It was not there, and they need to have that, or they would be in violation, and I'm sending a letter. Um, or, or do they still have a permit for?
Two bedroom.
They have a permit for three bedroom, bed, B and B, and that's all that they will be allowed to operate, and that was made very clear to them. So anything other than that, they have to come back before the Planning Commission and get permission.
Who did they, did they say something about a zoning permit?
Right, that's what I'm.
The zoning permit was not given to my office, but has not been passed practice. And I agree, I think it's part of the zoning ordinance, and Richie Burke and I have talked about that in the past month. We recognize that something that hasn't been done, that needs to be done, and we're adding that to our list of to-dos of something that needs to be done. So I have since reviewed the same application, and we will continue to process those in the future, but it has not been done.
So they're not just making repairs to the dams, to the drains?
They are not just making repairs, they are doing significant construction.
They're, they're building the thing that they said. But all they did was they changed the names, like they had spa room, and now it's like an office.
That you can build the house of your dreams, so.
Okay.
Okay, here, my feeling is that in this situation, uh, how can we, or how can the county monitor and enforce the, uh, permissions that they have? And we, it, it seems to be terribly easy to rent all your five rooms out and say you only have three, who's going to know the difference?
They are.
Uh, pardon me?
They will.
They will, exactly, and so.
Debbie's one of the.
And, and I think in some ways, this is a, a problem our county has, we don't really have an enforcement ability for all of the many disparate things that are happening. And, uh, but this particular action seems very bald to me, that you.
Very what?
Bald, it, it's not covered up, you can.
You mean like outrageous?
Outrageous, yes.
It, it, it's not in the spirit of the law, they just, they, they just slip around something and call it their house, and every man, or every family can build their castle. And they can be ugly castles. and they can be ugly castles, but they're allowed to build their castle.
But the problem is they're not illegal until they've committed the crime, you know, and how do we know that they've-
I want to speak to all of what you just said. First of all, if whoever it is just came in for a permit to build that exact same thing, I guess I would feel a little differently if they said, we're building our dream Taj Mahal, or whatever, and, you know, this is it.
Our true house.
And it's, you're right, it's nobody, it's not the county's business, how many kids they have, or whatever. How many people are really going to live in it, or what they're going to, they, but, uh, in this case, it's, it's not a little bit different, it's a lot different. They have, uh, it's not just a house now, it's a commercial operation. It's a bed and breakfast, that is not some accessory use, it's not a chicken house, you know, it's not a garage, or a barn, and somebody's turning it into an empty car museum, or something like that, it's a commercial permitted use under the county ordinance. And, that's number one.
It's deemed to be a residence.
Well, it's a residence with a B and B in it, but that, that-
It's being built as a residence, it's not commercial.
Well, I, 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 I think to differ with you.
Do they maintain the three, uh?
They say they do, they say they do, but they're, but the, alright, I'm going to get to that, so, let me finish. The second thing is that since it is, they came in here and did what they need to do under the ordinance, under section 170-50, it says status of special uses, semicolon, enlargements. Section B says, once a special permit or special exception has been granted, however, the use shall not be enlarged, extended, increased in intensity, or relocated, unless an application is made for a new special permit or special exception, except that the BCA or board may waive or modify requirements and so forth. So that's what they did, they came in and applied to do that, indicating to me, and anybody else that's paying attention, that that's their intention, to, that's what they said in their application, they want to enlarge it, and in fact are enlarging the structure, and they're relocating the structure, because the structure's not located in the same place it was before. It's now occupying a whole different footprint than it occupied, that's a relocation. They're changing the number of bedrooms, uh, from, I think, three or four, that were originally in the house, three, to, could be ten.
As a residence.
And they're saying, and they're saying, it's not just that they're saying it, if they came, like I said, came and called, they're saying it after the planning commission denied their recommended, or recommended denial of their application, so.
So what would you recommend?
Well, wait a minute, I'm not finished. Second, the zoning ordinance is really clear, and I'll tell you folks why it's really clear. Because back when this was written in nineteen eighty-five, the zoning administrator was yours truly, and we had problems just like this all the time, because old blue, the nineteen seventy-four ordinance, left something to be desired. I see Peter Luke smiling over there, because he knows I'm running. And I said to the planning commission, put it, make it clear, and they did make it clear, and you know why? Because I wrote most of this, Dick McKeer. Zoning permits, permit required, no principal or accessory structures or use permissible by right, by special permit or special exception, shall be constructed for excavation or grading thereof begun before the issuance of a zoning permit by the zoning administrator. No building permit shall be issued prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. And then in the parenthesis, permitted uses that don't require site improvements or health department approval shall not require a zoning permit. Subsection D, forms and information required. An application for a zoning permit shall be made to the zoning administrator on forms to be provided, someone left out the word, by him. The zoning administrator shall require and be furnished with all plans and documents as may be required to determine whether the proposed structure, use, and facilities will be in compliance with the provisions of this chapter. Each application for a zoning permit shall be accompanied by the following items, or as much thereof as the BCA may require, and then there's a list, and one of them is a statement of the use. Okay, the next, and a flat, and the whole thing, and then subsection E or F says certificate. Whenever a zoning permit is issued, the zoning administrator shall also furnish the applicant with a certificate indicating that the said zoning permit has been issued and is valid for the period stipulated therein. The applicant shall thereupon deliver said certificate to the building inspector, should say official, when a building permit is required. The certificate shall be posted as per directions on the certificate. Now, that's been in the ordinance since nineteen eighty-five, when they adopted this finally, thank goodness. And I really cannot speak, and I don't want to splash it on Debbie, because it's not her fault, because she's right. But it's been thirty-one years, thirty-one years, and we still don't have this form, we still don't have this being done, we still have the building inspector, just like when I was zoning administrator, thirty-one years ago, willy-nilly issuing building permits without checking with the zoning administrator to see if it's a legal use. And that's why we don't have an enforcement mechanism, because this is the enforcement mechanism to keep this from happening.
I just got a bill from them.
Right.
And it seemed to me I had to have a zoning program, every building you build in has to have a zoning program.
Except here, they don't do it, because they, nobody gave the form, and so, if, another thing that I want to point out.
If it's new construction, it comes to my office.
Yeah, well, what we do is-
It specifically says, it doesn't matter if it's specific, it's new.
So, so what do you propose? And we're going to move, and we're going to move in that direction, we're going to fix it, so.
I want to say one more thing, here's the other part of, with the enforcement mechanism. If you have a zoning permit, and you have a certificate issued, and it says on there, all what's in the list is there, it specifies what use the zoning administrator said you're building this thing for. So you can't have a situation where somebody said they're building a barn, like at the Sings, and then you go over there six months later, and they have a frickin' apartment in there. I'm not yelling at you, I'm just annoyed that this is happening, and it has got to stop.
So, is, is there a recourse now, because?
Sure. They haven't started?
Yes, they have.
I, they've started tearing stuff down, they haven't been built.
They have started excavation.
Right, but they haven't started building.
Well, we're not still, yes.
Alright, so, so you can-
I will follow through, it's how we like to.
Well, what does that mean?
I'll do what the ordinance says.
Well, is there going to be a stop work issue until you do? I think that's what Richie should do, stop work, issue a stop work order. You know, last month, I'm not involved in it, but I had to sit the planning commission meeting, and here, one of the planning commissioners go off, just like I did, only probably worse, about somebody else in the county with a flagrant violations of the zoning ordinance, and we've got to get the zoning administrator to write him a citation and all this stuff, and I sat there and listened, and I read my zoning ordinance, I can't see what the violation was. I don't think there's any violation in that particular case, but he was outraged, outraged, he repeated twice, about why the county ordinance wasn't being enforced, and nobody was doing anything about it, and, uh, off-duty, uh, sheriff's department people were going down there and, and, and directing traffic, and an illegal use. Well, I don't see what any of the illegal use was, I don't see what the zoning violation was, and so forth. And so I, this is clearly to me, it's not only a violation of the ordinance, and not only a violation of the zoning permit business, it's a violation of the, of the part about amending a special use activity and enlarging it without getting permission. And I think that's the other part of it, that you're not, that's not just about Richie. The only way that they, that in my view, and what we've seen, what's been filed, and what we've seen at this board, the only way, it says right in that ordinance that I read, the only people that have, or the only ones that have the authority to extend that, or amend, or extend that special use permit, zoning permit, is us, the Board of Zoning Appeals. And if they don't come here, I don't think the zoning administrator has the authority, no matter what they put on that thing, that's single-family residents, or whatever, unless they're giving up their special use permit. If they're going to put on their zoning permit, single-family residents, and you write them a letter and say, this means you're giving up your special use permit, go ahead, hurry up and give them the permit. Right away, get out that pen and say approved. But, if they don't give it up, they can't change that structure without coming to us, because only we have the authority to give the zoning permit.
They have been before, so I don't know that we opened a meeting.
No, that's right, they withdrew, they withdrew.
So they withdrew, and they have to wait a year?
No, they don't have to wait a year.
They withdrew, so they can come back at any time.
Anytime.
They can tell me if we deny it.
If they're not, and then here's the-
Or if the hearing started.
Alright, the next, I have another question to ask, um, in some conversation that was presented here under oath, some of these-
Well, wait a minute, are we going to vote on this? I like to make a, I made that a form of a motion, I think that's what-
It started off long, but I forgot.
Long time ago what the motion was.
The motions, the motions are to direct the zoning administrator to do that, and to make one, and then that if they don't, if they don't change, give up their special use permit for a three-bedroom B and B, that they must come back here to amend it and get approval before they proceed with any construction, that's my motion.
And Chairman, again, my afternoon reading of the ordinances, I remember reading somewhere that it is a misdemeanor for people to violate this. And so I'm not really sure who that is, or what it is, and the wording wasn't clear, whether it's the applicant, or it meant people in the county, or whatever, but I think it's a little bit more than that, I mean, there's, the ordinance reads like there might be a misdemeanor charge involved, what's going on, and that should be investigated by somebody, just a thought.
Okay.
I'd, I'd second to this motion. Uh, I, I'm happy to second it, I'm, I'm just not quite sure what it is. So what, what, what I think that the motion we have is to communicate with the Sings that they cannot maintain their special bed and breakfast exception, use permit, with the basically reconstruction of their residence. They can reconstruct their existing residence as a residence only, but not as a residence and B and B.
Right.
And, and, and that they need to come before this board for a renewal of their previous-
Or an amendment.
An amendment of their previous, uh, exception, to maintain it.
Exactly right, and the third thing is that Richie, you should ask Richie Burke to issue a stop work order until they do one or the other. So there's three parts to the thing.
So we've got a second, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Alright, okay. The next thing, because I do not know about the misdemeanor thing, is that-
Now I was going to leave.
All the way when you get home. Is, is there, fine, to continue further with this, is it a misdemeanor or a misdemeanor?
Yeah, no, look, it's in one, it's in the next section, one thirty-eight.
What page is this?
Uh, I don't know, it's on that page, uh, near the end, though. One seventy-one thirty-eight, it was handed out, it's in the hand.
No, I don't have, no one gave me a hand.
Oh, well, there's a whole bunch of them sitting down here. I don't know, they were never going to hear. Uh, sorry, I didn't, I thought everybody handed them, and gave them, handed the excellent, and I'm here. But it says, any person, whether owner, lessy, principal, agent, employee, or otherwise, who violates any provision of this chapter, i.e. the zoning chapter, who erects, modifies, or uses any building, or uses any land in violation of any site plan, permit, or proper, approved other, either under this chapter or under any other prior zoning ordinance, or who conspires with, aids, abets, or permits another to do any of the foregoing, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not less than ten dollars or more than a thousand. And so, you know, theoretically, whoever issued that building permit has permitted somebody to violate the zoning ordinance if they didn't have a zoning permit. So you should tell maybe whoever that is, that they could, it, it's not just a matter of people on the BCA are obsessed, it's under the ordinance, that's what it says. It's a misdemeanor. And the Sings as well, what they're doing, in my opinion, well, I don't want to prejudge anybody, but.
The other question we had was, uh, in some of the conversation, that, that the dot, dots in the place, that there has been a porch put on, that would be a very, that would be a violation of a variance, because it's not very far for this, because of the setback, and that they put an eight-foot or ten-foot wide porch where they only had, you could go anywhere. That needs to be-
It's just a driver.
I, I was marginally involved in that process, I saw the lumber that they used to the post.
Did you know what they were going to use it for, did you?
Pardon me?
Did you know what they were going to use it for?
I did, they, what they told me, was, what, what they told me, and the building office, is that they were replacing a porch that had originally been there, and they had to do it within a year of taking it off to put the new one back on. So that would be the way to, whoever, I, I would think, building office, uh, the, the, where you get building permits, would be the place to look for that.
They did replace a porch that was existed on the cabin, that has been there since I lived there, which is, so.
Okay, so you-
So, so it's all there, it's been replaced.
There was an existing porch, if you recall, that maybe three foot wide, but the one that is being put on is about seven, eight foot wide. From the front of the porch to the edge of the ground highway is maybe ten foot.
So it's not exact, it's not in the same footprint?
No, it's wide.
Well, the other thing that is applicable, sure, does any administrator knows, is, um, is, uh, the, uh, non-conforming, uh, use section, which of course I couldn't find without my computer. Uh, but I know that, I'm pretty sure that it says, if you, if you have a non-conforming structure, and it's damaged or destroyed by fire, or something like that, because we sort of had that in that Butler case in that trailer, you can rebuild it within a year, but I think if you have a non-conforming structure, and you tear down part of it, because I think there's a case in that up in Front Row, you can't rebuild it. The only, the only exception that allows you to rebuild is if some natural disaster takes it away, like a flood, or a fire, or something like that, anyways, check it, but I think what it says is if you tear it down, you, you don't have, you can't rebuild it, not in a year, or two years, or any of it, it's out.
Most counties, that is repairing.
Well, if they're repairing it, that's the thing, but if they tore it off, and-
If they tore it off to repair, if that's what, it was so far gone that it needed to be completely redone. If they tore it off with the intention of not using it, and then decided they wanted it back, and was-
I think that's something that the building officials should look into.
Well, out here where we had the, the, or newer than Coopers places, they had, there was a big billboard sign, and the guy started taking it down to repair it, and John McCarthy said, because you've taken it, started to take it apart, didn't have a permit, the thing comes down, and that was a big issue.
There's, there, I, there's a case, and I think it's up in Front Row, and Doug Blumberg was involved in it, and I think, and it went to Virginia Supreme Court, and it's all about nothing on the leases, and I think that answers the question, but I think
Because that was not-
The statute is very, is very specific, uh, and I, I don't have it with me, but I had it with that straggle thing, because I thought that, I thought they were originally, before that came up at the meeting, I thought it had burned down recently, and they were, you know, putting it back, and I thought that was going to be the issue, but I'm almost certain that that statute says, you have to be, it's very dicey when you get into, just what you're talking about, repairs, or places, it's on a different footprint, it can't be, so. it can't be, so, anyway. And we make an motion to ask that, that, can we look into it?
No, that was, that's just, uh, I'm asking for a motion for that, I think we need to do that, that somebody should's gotten a list and should- Any, any other business before the board?
I'll move to a juror.
I'll say it.
Peter, Lou, Scott.
I'll say it.
Well, how can you do it, Terry?
Oliver says aye.